Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, September 10th, 2019 Business Meeting of Olympia City Council. For the record, council met earlier in executive session to discuss a personnel matter. No decisions were made. Also for the record, we have a quorum this evening with Mayor Pro Tem Bateman excused. Under announcements this evening, I would like to invite our City Manager, Steve Hall, to talk about some of the, you know, the quiet things that are happening in our city these days.
Great, thank you Mayor Selby. So I do have an announcement. So I think it goes without saying that the Olympia community and the city organization are struggling in our response to overwhelming homelessness in Thurston County and beyond. The city has been moving toward a final cleanup of the unsanctioned camp under the Fourth Avenue Bridge. We've given several weeks' notice for people to leave that location. A lot has happened since we gave that notice. Some folks have moved on, some haven't. There's been a lot of community stir around whether this is a reasonable policy decision or not. In just the last few days, there's been some outreach from First Christian Church and other faith groups and others about maybe there is a better solution. And so our homeless response staff and the city are encouraged that maybe there's opportunity for new partnership. So the announcement is that the city is pausing for a short period, the work to complete the cleanup under Fourth Avenue. And don't be confused about this issue. The concerns of public health and public safety and environmental degradation under the bridge are real and will continue. And this is perhaps the worst location that I can imagine for a temporary encampment of any kind. We're pleased to learn that one of the concerns we had about a gas pipeline under the Fourth Avenue Bridge is actually an active pipeline under the adjacent Fifth Avenue Bridge, where we've also had camping and fires, but currently there are not camps there. So that's relieving, but there are many, many problems that will only get worse under the Fourth Avenue Bridge as we continue. Nonetheless, acknowledging these many deficiencies for this existing location, we feel we should give dialogue and action a chance, not just more talk, but action. So as people are saying they'll step forward to help the city, it needs to be real. Otherwise, we'll have no choice but to go back to the Fourth Avenue Bridge and move it without good choices. I know this announcement will disappoint and discourage many, and others will be pleased. That's not the point. I'm not here to create winners and losers, but it seems like, from a city's standpoint, we should take a short time to explore better choices. So I'm going to violate the separation of church and state for one minute and say, "Thank God for First Christian Church. They've stepped up time and time again and said they'll help. Others have helped too. We really need that right now if we're going to resolve this problem." The testimony that you'll hear tonight, council members, is important, but I hope as people talk to you, they'll also tell you what role they will play in helping find better options. Since the issue of homeless response is much bigger than the Fourth Avenue Bridge, I wanted just to take a few minutes to help share with the community members who are here and watching some of the other things that the city is doing around this response. And I wish we had more local partners, regional partners, state partners, but we're doing a lot. So I've asked Colin DeForest, who's our homeless response coordinator, to share just a few other things that we're working on, and maybe folks will see an opportunity for them to plug into some of those other efforts as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. And thank you, City Manager. You know, I think the size of the room tells how big of an issue this is. So I do think it's really important that we take a moment to really reflect on the work that the city of Olympia has done in the last 14 months, really 14 months since we declared that emergency declaration. So what I'd say is, with all of the interventions and everything that we do, I think we always have kind of this guiding kind of statement in mind, with compassion, be an example to the region and nation by using innovative housing interventions to engage and connect individuals to services while also creating a safe and inviting community. You know, ideally, this is guiding every intervention that we do. And I think with a polarizing topic like this, there's times when, for some groups, that seems really hard to see, but really, at the end of the day, that's really what's guiding our work, I would say. So there's a lot going on right here, right? And that's crazy. So what I'll tell you is, this is what we've done in the last 14 months. I've worked in city government for a while. I've worked for cities that have done amazing work, and they could not put this many interventions up in a five-year period. So the fact that we've done this in 14 months is, I think, is amazing. That's 15 different interventions. Everything from partnership with OPD Walking Patrol, to OPD's Familiar Faces, to the Crisis Response Unit, to some of the other more visible things that we can see on the ground, which I'll just dive into just really quickly a little bit. Many of us are familiar with the mitigation site. So the mitigation site is downtown on Franklin in Olympia Avenue. That is a site of, it's been there since December. Currently, there are 115 tent sites. I think we have, it fluctuates a lot. There's a lot of people going in and out of there, 120-plus individuals. One of the goals with the mitigation site, as you can see with that third bullet, is 62 individuals in coordinated entry. I think what we thought when we started this mitigation site was, most of the individuals in this homeless world are in coordinated entry. And I think what we found out, one of the data points is, most of these individuals are actually not in our coordinated entry system. So one of the great things about the mitigation site is it really gives us an opportunity for individuals to stabilize, take a positive step, and also it gives us some quantification of how many individuals we have that are out there, one, but also, two, individuals that are out there and are interested in following some very basic rules, right? The mitigation site alone is not going to end homelessness. It's not pretty, but is it necessary? I would argue, yes, that it is. Talking about pretty, I would say, in comparison, Plum Street Village is pretty. I'm very proud of Plum Street Village. I think the city and the community has put in a lot of work, sweat equity, time into Plum Street Village. Right now, Plum Street Village has been open, it's in its seventh month. We have eight households out of Plum Street Village that have been permanently connected to housing, so they're permanently housed, which is the ultimate goal of Plum Street Village. Plum Street Village is not for our most vulnerable. Plum Street Village is in place to quickly move individuals that are work-able, that are ready to get back on their feet, that just need a little bit of a hand up. Let's get them in there, stabilize them, not let them get too comfortable, but comfortable, and then get them moved on to permanent housing. And I think we're seeing that work right now, and with our new coordinated entry partner, Community Action Council, and some of the conversations we're having right now, I am extremely excited about what that's going to look like moving forward. I would go to the third bullet and say, "That's pretty impressive. Eighty-eight percent of the residents have a source of income." Is that jobs? Not necessarily. Many of these individuals are collecting disability, unemployment, but that's a great start. And part of that is, to have a source of income, oftentimes, you're going to have to have identification and some of these things that really slow individuals down. So that's great to see. Secure storage. I think secure storage is one of those things that, it's kind of a no-brainer. And I think that any city across the country that doesn't have secure storage is really missing the boat. It's probably the easiest win that you can get and the best opportunity for individuals that are out there on the streets, because suddenly, they have a safe place to store some of their belongings. Are they going to store seven shopping carts worth? No, they're not. But there's the ability to store some belongings, which in many cities is not, there's no opportunity for that. We expanded secure storage. We now have two, and you can see in that picture, you guys have probably driven by that many times, it's super unassuming, but it's just two Connex containers that were donated in a partnership with the Port of Olympia, which was awesome. They fabricated those for us, and you can see some of the numbers there. So that's very exciting, and we'll continue to use those and probably expand as we move This is one of our newest projects, and it's taken a while to get off the ground. We're getting close. We actually have an identified church, Westminster Presbyterian, which is really stepping up to the plate. We're in the process of moving tiny houses there right now. I was on the phone with someone trying to logistically line that up right before this meeting. The goal with this, once again, it's just another housing intervention. It's a way to get, as we heard earlier, the faith-based organizations, new people, to the table to really help out where they can. Once again, is eight tiny houses going to end the problems that we have under Fourth Bridge? No, it's not going to. I'm not going to tell you that it is. But once again, it's another intervention that we have on our continuum of housing interventions. So I think that's very exciting, and I'm really confident that as soon as that first church jumps in, all those other churches that have kind of got their toes on the edge are going to follow through too. Big piece of everything we're doing, and I think you, moving forward, this is going to be the key to everything, is regional partnerships. I think you hear it till we're blue in the face. City employees say the city of Olympia can't do this alone. I think our partners are finally stepping up. I won't read all these, but you can see some of the bullets. There's a lot of positive, hard, tough conversations that are going on at the county level and at the Lacey level, because things are getting real there. And so I'm really confident that we'll have some actions moving forward with the county and Lacey also. Tom Waters in. And then I think down at the bottom, there's no doubt that for us to have any success moving forward, the state needs to be involved with any of the work that we are doing. And I mean, as we sit here, and I think depending on what side you're on, there's a lot of people that are saying, "What in the heck is Olympia doing?" But what I'll tell you is, there's a lot of cities around this region and country that are going, "What in the heck is Olympia doing? That's great. We want to do what Olympia is doing." We get calls all the time. With that being said, I think as Steve said, there's really no winners here. This is not a win-lose situation. It's an emergency situation, and I think tough decisions have to be made, and these are emergency responses. I think we can label it homeless, but this is an emergent situation across our country and definitely across our region. I think we need one mitigation site, another one. We really need two. And to be honest, we probably need more than two, just in Thurston County. So we're going to continue to address unsanctioned camping. I think we've been doing that. I think that there's sometimes the idea that we're sweeping all over town. In my year, and a year and a half, year and three, four months, in all of the encampment cleanups that we have done, we have never arrested one individual. OPD hasn't. Our police are great when we do these cleanups, and really, we try our hardest not to. When you look at Fourth Avenue Bridge, there's a reason why there's bathrooms down there. There's a reason why there's fencing down there. There's a reason why there's garbage down there. That's because we have been trying and will continue to try to work with these individuals to make that successful, right? But at some point, costs have to be weighed. When it's unsafe for a community, at what point do you say, "All right, this spot is not working"? And that's very real. Lastly, I'd just say, like, until we have a regional response, we're going to continue to struggle, right? So as long as we're the only ones that have done anything, we will continue to struggle. And I think that's where we're at right now, because we just looked over that list of 15 interventions that we've done, which is amazing, and we're still right here. So that gives us an idea of where we're at. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that presentation. I thought this was an opportunity for us to update not just our community in the room, but our community in the viewing audience. And we've even got some television cameras, so you're going to be getting more phone calls now, Colin, about all the work that we're doing. So I would open it up to council if they have any additional questions for Steve Hall or for Colin. Any other comments? All right, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I just want to say thank you to the staff and the community for supporting us through this really hard time. I've been chairing a new Regional Housing Council with our regional partners, and we're working really hard, and we're getting close to hopefully having an announcement in the near future about a regional mitigation site, and I'm really excited about that. And I need everybody to encourage everyone to help us with that conversation, if you have any connections out in the other cities or in the county. I also want to say that I truly believe that we are barely beginning to see the impact of the largest economic inequality in multiple generations in America. And I think that it's really important that we realize that, and there's a great, and I don't have the exact citation, but there's a really good study out just recently that's a study of unmanaged camping across America. And it's something in the threshold of thousands of percent increase. This is not something that Olympia is dealing with, and I don't even believe that a regional approach will be enough to get us where we need. We need a national solution and a state solution, and it comes down to income inequality. This is about income. This is about people who don't have the means to take care of themselves and put a roof over their head. This is part of our housing crisis, and this is part of our climate change crisis at the same time. And if, you know, I just have to say, we live in one of the best places in the world to be in this moment, in our climate, and that means more people are going to be coming here without means. And I think that we need to be talking in much larger numbers and not talking about 30 or 50 people at a time. So I want to thank you all for being part of the conversation, and I'll challenge you when you speak tonight to think about Steve's comment of, "What can you bring to the table?" Because everybody needs to play a role, and a lot of you are. In fact, everyone that I know in here is in some way helping the conversation. So thank you for that, and I'm excited to hear what you have to say, even though I know it's going to be hard.
All right, there's going to be a lot of talking tonight. You want to go? Councilmember Parshley, next.
I have to echo Councilmember Cooper. Every time I listen to Marketplace today or read about our economy, including one NPR report that said, "Yes, we have one of the lowest unemployments in history, but the average family has almost no money, and they're barely making it." And our Alice reports where people are on the edge is larger than it has ever been. And that means that we have more people at risk, and that risk is going to grow. And it's going to grow as we do get shuffling around the country from climate change. And we are living in one of the best places to be in the future for the climate change. And as that becomes common knowledge, we will be getting eco-refugees coming. I wrote this little piece, and I will kind of do it extemporaneously a little bit, in that I noticed that in June and July, we all celebrated our one-year recognition of our crisis. And it's a crisis that sometimes, because we live in this city, we think it's only happening to us. It is happening to the region, it's happening to the state. When grants pass, Oregon, which has, I think, the third of the population of Olympia, had 700 people in their point-in-time census this year. It's not just happening to Olympia. We celebrated the 15 points of intervention. I agree with Colin, it's pretty phenomenal, and I really applaud the staff. I applaud the whole staff, because it was a cultural change. There was no silos in this city. Everybody was working on this crisis. You guys, amazing. I saw Amy Buckler and Colin. I think you guys didn't sleep through January and February. Amazing. But one thing we all committed to, all seven of us, in June and July, was this is not enough. We are not done. We have to evolve. We have to learn from our 15 points of intervention. We have to learn what worked and what didn't, what needs to be improved on. So we have to commit to that. One of the things that I have recognized, and I know most of the council has, and most of you, whether you know it or not, is we are a community in a collective trauma. And the epicenter of that trauma are those without shelter. And we like to demonize them, villainize them. The folks that have mental illness and drug addictions are the most visual, but we have camps all over town. We have people without shelter all over town that you don't see. We are a collective trauma-suffering people, and we have to recognize that. So when you speak in anger, and when I speak in anger, it's our trauma speaking. But we have to act compassionately to those people who are at the center of this, because at any one moment, 10 seconds separates us from them. Lose a job, get in a car wreck, get a bad medical diagnosis, anything like that. Your landlord raises your rent. So as I look forward, one of the things I've learned is that we cannot find one-size-fit-all solutions, and that includes our stabilization camps. And when I look at the Fourth Street Bridge, I see an opportunity to work with this community, not necessarily keeping them here, I'm not saying that, but keep this community in this group and work with them, with our service providers, with our faith base. And when we get a new stabilization camp set up, we move them in block. We keep that community together. And we have to recognize that the mitigation camp downtown has done tremendous things, but it is not the end, and it is not the only flavor we have to build. And then lastly, back to Councilmember Cooper, we have to get to housing. That's the answer. And if we can't figure out a way to get to housing, we are going to have more and more and more camps, and we're going to look like the 1930s.
All right. Did I see Councilmember Gilman's hand up at all? So I'd like some clarification from you, Steve. You made a recommendation based on probably a conversation that you and I had today with Pastor Amy LaCroix at First Christian. She came forward, and her congregation came forward, and she is working with a group of Concerned Clergy, who are small but mighty churches here in town. And I talked to Colin, and we made some phone calls, went over there and talked to Pastor Amy this morning. She said that she could help with the future management of the people under the Fourth Avenue Bridge as it is, which is under 20 people. She felt that they could facilitate some self-governance options for that group as we work to move them off that site. I am, on the record, is not supporting that site for any kind of camp. It's like the worst combination of an environmentally sensitive area. It's also culturally significant to our Squaxton tribe. There are things that are happening under there that we're kind of glossing over in all this collective trauma. There's a lot of trauma that's being experienced, folks in the camp, on each other. They're vulnerable, and they're being exploited. And I feel that if these church groups can come in and help stabilize them and get them into another area that we could work towards creating, I would be, I would step off of my position of moving forward with tomorrow morning's cleanup. It's really hard for me to say that. I was adamant that it had to happen, and it really could have happened, and I can talk about that another time. But I feel like there's certain organizations out there that are exploiting this group to make their own point, and they're not really interested in the welfare of those people. So I am comfortable if the Concerned Clergy stay involved, and we give a continuation of the camp, and we reassess it in two weeks, and reassess. It's not a motion, it's not anything other than we are trying to work with the people that came forward at the last minute. So is that something that you think staff can help with?
So I think what we're going to do as staff is see if we can make progress toward real action, and for me, that includes alternate locations. I just, you know, having worked this for the last couple of years and seen what's realistic for staff, we cannot make Fourth Avenue Bridge a viable site for the reasons I mentioned and others. We can, though, spend more time working with those to find a smoother transition to another location. I think it's worth that investment, so I can't say if it's a week or two weeks or more, but if we're making progress, I'd like to defer the cleanup of that location. But it is, in my opinion, never going to work because of all the issues mentioned. So, but we do want to give dialogue and action a chance, so that makes more sense than creating a big competition in the community about whether they go or stay. So that's where we are, but I can't give you a specific...
Literally between a rock and a hard place. But I trust the Concerned Clergy group. I do not trust the other group that's down there organizing these people. I don't think they have their best interests at heart. So thanks, Colin, for all the work that you've been doing and getting us to this point where we were almost ready to transition folks to, over into other shelter options. Sorry it didn't work out.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Mayor Selby?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend tonight's agenda.
All right, there's a motion to amend tonight's agenda.
Great, I'd like to add an action item regarding the camp on the Fourth Avenue...
I need a second.
Oh, that'd be great.
Oh, your motion to amend, okay.
All right, thank you.
This is unusual.
I'd like to add an action item regarding the camp under the Fourth Avenue Bridge immediately following agenda approval and before any other item comes before us tonight. And I have a motion prepared for that purpose.
Second. All right, so the motion's been seconded. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. Motion passes. So all in favor of adopting the amended agenda, say aye.
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 Nay. So we have an agenda, and it, part of your motion was to circumvent all the rest of the agenda with your motion.
I'm not sure circumvention is the word I'd use. I'd like to make a motion at this point.
Okay.
Thank you. I move that unless there are imminent harms to safety, health, or environment that are impossible to mitigate through partnerships, facilitation, and problem-solving, the city of Olympia will delay clearing the unsanctioned camp under the Fourth Avenue Bridge unless and until a comparable, appropriate, alternative location is designated for this particular community. I further move that we direct the city manager to prioritize, as an emergency, the sheltering of the campers at this site, and that he actively partner with members of the faith community and others to support appropriate interim arrangements until permanent facilities are available. That this council and the community be provided with regular progress reports on this process, and that any future camp clearances, which might trigger the need for advance notice to the occupants, be brought before council for affirmative approval before action is Is there a second?
It's second. Any discussion?
Yes.
You want to go? I've got some comments. All right. So we're not entirely surprised by this motion. You did put it out on your campaign materials and Facebook such. So I know in Olympia, people are frustrated with the slow progress that we were describing this evening. Nothing is going as quickly as we want, so I appreciate your patience. But also, let me start by saying that our sister, oh, sorry, our city fosters passionate debate better than most communities. In fact, having opposing views up here has led to better process and better results in the past. The council faces an important decision in this motion. Our action will have serious consequences, and will send an important message to the people of Olympia about how this council does or doesn't do its job. Productive, thoughtful, reasoned debate is the basis of our democracy. Unfortunately, I believe as mayor that a loosely formed group of activists with an even looser connection to the truth has hijacked the thoughtful process leading to the cleanup under the Fourth Avenue Bridge. This was a process that we directed staff to pursue, which we have done, which they have done with great professionalism. They have treated everyone with respect and compassion. Colin, earlier stated the timeline of the events that got us to this point. This process was no surprise to the council, as we've been getting updates regularly all summer. What is surprising to me is this 11th-hour pivot. Tonight, if a majority of council members vote to reverse themselves, we will do a disservice to not only ourselves and our staff, but more importantly, to the people of Olympia. Our residents have voted numerous times to tax themselves through the Home Fund, the public safety measure, to provide a whole continuum of services to address homelessness from the street to a home. And I know you're frustrated, I am too, but here we are with these programs finally all up and running, finally. For a city our size, like Colin said, we're doing amazing work setting in motion all these homeless response plans. We're regularly held up across the... We're regularly held up across the state and now regionally as a leader in our continuum of care model. We have an obligation to our community to follow through on that work. This effort has been months in the making and we've been able to get the population of, under the bridge encampment down to a point where it's possible finally to accommodate them in our remaining existing shelter system. We were this close. So, you talk about respect and accountability. Well, that's a two-way street. You demand respect and you demand dignity, but that's a two-way street. We need it back as a community. Councilmember partially spoke about the collective trauma that we're in. That's a two-way street too. And we are, we're conflating as well a lot of behaviors that aren't related to homelessness. They're just bad behaviors. And so I don't want to demonize the homeless population in our community. They're not, they're not all bad people. There are other people out there that are exploiting those homeless people. It's really about behaviors. So all of us, no matter our age, gender, income, or ability, deserve to be treated with respect and to be accountable for our actions. I visited the camp last Friday and I believe the current campers are still there because they refuse to move into a managed situation because they've been emboldened to refuse services by the very people who pretend to have their best interests in mind. If this motion passes, we'll be caving in to the demands of a vocal minority that does not represent the best interests of this city. And we will be setting ourselves up for more of these tactics whenever this group or others don't get its way. You don't reward a toddler in the candy aisle for throwing a fit. It's not governance, it's not even compassion. I know these comments, I make these comments knowing that some of the people in this room know of someone or were themselves in my front yard last year with masked faces screaming obscenities at me, littering the blocks around my house with a flyer showing an arrow through my head and blood coming out of my mouth. It was an attempt to quiet me, but I think my comments tonight show that I'm not going to be quiet. What those masked bullies really did though was terrorize my neighbors, including an autistic young man who is still fearful that they're going to be back. That's not democracy, that's domestic terrorism. I also make these comments knowing that there's someone in this room who incited a man to come into chambers and shove paperwork on my chest resulting in a misdemeanor assault charge to which he later pled guilty. I know I'm vulnerable to these tactics in this chamber every Tuesday. I know I'm vulnerable walking to my car tonight, but I will continue to speak up for the community at large. The people of Olympia elected us to provide leadership for the greater good of the whole community and I don't intend to relinquish that responsibility and I'll be voting against this motion tonight. Anybody else? Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mayor Selby, and thanks for your words. The manager's announcement tonight provides excellent news from the First Christian Church and from other faith communities and faith leaders. Like the financial contribution from the Evergreen Christian Congregation and the work of the Westminster Presbyterian Church, this most recent pledge of support highlights the impacts of homelessness. It's not an issue that just can be left to city government. To be effective, we need to reach across the region and throughout the community. We need partners in the faith community, from the business community, and nonprofit, and from service clubs. An effective response requires that the Thurston community pull together for shared objectives. Camping under the Fourth Avenue Bridge was identified as a problem back in January when the unsanctioned encampments at B Street and at State and Franklin were closed. At that time, city officials expressed confidence that new sites would be provided for needed capacity and the bridge encampment would be closed promptly. The community and the campers under the bridge were told that the encampment would not be removed until an alternative site was made available. In February, in this room and in city newsletters, the message was, and I quote, "We are confident we will have the needed shelter options to address the bridge encampment soon." So now, in September, after more than seven months, we still do not have needed shelter options to address the camp at the bridge. Every member of this council and many staff have been working diligently, urgently, to identify a place for the bridge campers to go. So far, we have failed. And I share in that responsibility for that failure. Considerable work has been undertaken with our regional and state partners, but as of today, there is no new capacity. We do not have a second mitigation site. We have not expanded the Salvation Army Shelter, Rosie's Place, or other shelters. We have not had a winter warming center for the past two years. Instead, we have overburdened a private health services center and hampered its success. We've not created the necessary partnerships to strengthen our coordinated entry program and we have not created eviction intervention services to stop adding to the growing number of homeless people in our community. Right now, as we are meeting, hundreds of people in Olympia are living under tarps, under tents, and in other makeshift shelters. They're in Grass Lake Refuge, in Percival Canyon, behind Yager Park. They're in the jungle, they're off Wheeler Street, and in many other hidden camps throughout our city. Hundreds of campers are in environmentally sensitive areas, behind homes, in the trees, in ravines. The public health and safety condition, excuse me, the public safety and health conditions of each of these camps is concerning. And the camp under the bridge is not much different from all the others, except that it's an obvious eyesore. In May of last year, this council passed a groundbreaking resolution that established a set of local actions to combat homelessness. That resolution defined how Olympia would act, what approach this city would take in dealing with the single most significant and urgent issue facing this community. This council recognized homelessness as the most imminent and pressing problem and we authorized extraordinary emergency powers to effectively address the issue. And now, more than a year later, we have not lived up to that commitment. We resolved to act with compassion, integrity, and effectiveness, and to implement actions that are evidence-based best practices to address the crisis of homelessness. The unanimous adoption of that May 2018 resolution did not come lightly. You may recall that before adoption, the council modified the resolution to include additional language about the commitment of the city council and the city organization to a culture that reflects these values. It is very difficult to locate homeless services. I want to commend my council colleagues. Every one of you, each one of you, has pulled together, working with our neighboring jurisdictions, the county, and with the state to implement better solutions. And now, with winter coming, and with the state to implement, I'm sorry, with winter coming, we find ourselves up against a wall. We must act decisively. We can't have vulnerable people out in the cold when the next snowbogatten arrives. Last month, the council was advised of a staff proposal to clear the camp under the bridge. As proposed, the city would simply empty the camp. Period. In this scenario, the bridge campers will likely relocate to downtown streets and into neighborhood green belts. I don't see how that's an improvement. This proposal just pushes people around. It takes Olympia back to the days of whack-a-mole enforcement. There's no progress in this, just repeated scuffles and police action. This approach is expensive, ineffective, and perpetual. And there is nothing to be gained by pushing people around. That cycle must be brought to an end. The clearing proposal called into question the sincerity and determination of this council and this community. We made a powerful commitment to evidence-based best practices. The proposal to simply clear the camp is far from a best practice. The idea that we would move forward without plans for the people that we would displace effectively abandons our resolutions, our emergency declarations, and our commitments. We would have demonstrated that we are not a trustworthy partner for our community members and for others. This is a serious problem. We are in the middle of negotiations with our regional partners regarding joint homeless services and we are finalizing a long-term homeless response plan. We need to be trustworthy in that process. A second mitigation site is in the works. I suggest we redouble our efforts, use our emergency powers, and get that mitigation site open. Let's make the tough choices, create the ability to responsibly move people off of unmanaged public property, and the cycle of endless whack-a-mole enforcement must come to an end. Now, with the support of the First Christian Church, we've been told that the camp clearing is expected to be delayed. I appreciate that a speedy response may be possible, but at the same time, my motion calls for assurance that the delay not be tied to a calendar, but rather to conditions on the ground. Through this action, the council will establish expectations that before the site is cleared, a comparable, safe, and appropriate alternative location will be available to the people currently in the bridge encampment. As we move through this interim period, we need regular progress reports from staff. Our community needs to know what is happening. And to ensure that the council is fully transparent in our community and future camp clearances that might trigger the need for advance notice to the occupants must be brought to this council for affirmative approval well before the clearing begins. Thank you, Mayor Selby.
Thank you. Was that part of the motion? I'm confused.
I think you asked for someone to speak to the motion and all of the expectations in my comments were included in the motion.
Okay.
Would you like me to reread the motion?
No, it seems like there's a lot of other expectations that were being put on staff in that comment versus the motion.
The only expectations that I mentioned were those that have previously been made by this council or that were included in the motion.
Okay.
May I ask to have the motion reread, please?
Okay.
I'd be happy to do that, thank you. I move that unless there are imminent harms to safety, health, or the environment that are impossible to mitigate through partnership, facilitation, and problem solving, the City of Olympia will delay clearing the unsanctioned camp under the Fourth Avenue Bridge unless and until a comparable, appropriate, alternative location is designated for and with that particular community. I further move that we direct the city manager to prioritize as an emergency the sheltering of the campers at this site, that he actively partner with members of the faith community and with others to support appropriate interim arrangements until permanent facilities are available, that this council and the community be provided with regular progress reports on this process, and that any future camp clearances, which might trigger the need for advance notice to the occupants, be brought before council for affirmative approval before that action is taken.
All right, so I don't have a copy of this motion. Does anybody else have a copy of the motion? So I'm really struggling to support while I'm...
I have a copy that Councilmember Rollins gave me.
But this is different, it's like a hybrid.
It is a hybrid.
Okay.
Is there a problem?
Well, yeah, it's really, that's governance. When you don't move on something that you don't even have in front of you. Committing a body like this is not, that's not good governance.
Can I play my role as a nitpicker?
Sure.
So, I have the motion, I think, as amended by Councilmember Jones. And when you're done, I'd like to understand what the intent is, and I don't. I'll just say, I honestly don't. I think it would behoove the council to take more time to craft a different motion and think about it before you vote. If need be, I can go into the parts that are confusing to me and open to interpretation, but I think you're rushing at something that's really important that I would have lots of questions about that are not the right venue to share. So I get that there's a difference in philosophy of how we move here, but I just think we're moving too fast and a motion tonight with the language I'm reading is confusing. I won't know how to tell staff how to react to it, honestly. So that's my advice.
All right. Councilmember Jones.
I'd like to amend the motion.
Amend it? Oh, okay. I don't, we're amending a motion that we're still acting on.
Won't you give me a second?
Give me some parliamentary help here, thank you.
Yeah, that can be done at this point in time. The motion's been made and it's going to have to go forward. It can only be amended if it's done by someone, than the person that's proposing the motion. And then that has to be, you know, voted on at that point whether or not the amendment is going to be considered.
Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry, you got quiet there at the end. So you're saying that Councilmember Jones can amend his own...
Cannot amend.
Cannot amend his own motion.
But someone else could if they would.
Someone else can amend it.
If that's accepted.
But he doesn't have to withdraw it to have it amended?
He does not have to withdraw.
Okay. So we'll wait a second, Molly, some conferring.
I would like to move to amend Councilmember Jones's motion.
Okay.
All right. And the amendment would be to remove the phrase "unless there is imminent and immeasurable harm to human health or safety or to the environment" from the motion. It's to make it really pithy and say, "I move that the City of Olympia will delay clearing the unsanctioned camp under the Fourth Avenue Bridge until a comparable, safe, and appropriate alternative location is available for this community." Period.
You're striking that?
That's, that's all we're keeping. "I move that the City of Olympia will delay clearing the unsanctioned camp under the Fourth Avenue Bridge until a comparable, safe, and appropriate alternative location is available for this community."
Period.
Period.
Okay, so it's...
Strike everything except that.
Well, it's really hard because I have nothing in front of me to even, I was not given a copy, so this is really unusual, highly unusual, as the chair...
I'll second that amendment.
...not to have a motion in front of me. All right, so we got a second?
Can I, point of order? Can I just clarify that now that it's on, the amendment is on the table, that your amendment was to strike all of the language after what you read in the original motion?
Just that one sentence.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember, excuse, oh, just on the amendment, no. No discussion on the amendment? So we're just approving the amendment now?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Now, we're going to take a vote on the actual amended motion? Continue, we're going to continue discussion on a motion that, okay.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for the, I know it's a different process, but I just want to say the presentations that I heard from both our city manager and our homelessness response coordinator were very much about how there's not really any winners in this situation. And I'm coming into this discussion with a very different lens. The one, the one solution that we have in our community that doesn't get talked about a whole lot is the pilot project at the Nickerson Camp, which was established last summer in July. And I just want to say that's so inspiring because in spite of the challenges that we're facing in this community, which are the challenges faced in all communities across the country, wealth extraction and hoarding by billionaires and by million millionaires, deadly and draining opioid crisis driven by profit-fueled Big Pharma, climate change driven by almost every aspect of our mainstream economy, from war to development to production to transportation, and the us-versus-them reactive culture and policies at the national level and frankly, a lot of times all down the line. Despite those challenges, there are people in this community, this beloved community, who are getting together, working across differences of culture, differences of housing status, differences of all kind, to figure out a workable solution, to figure out what's the best possible outcome. the best possible outcome in the real world, given our resources, which are few, given national and state governments, which are not as responsive as we would like them to be, and as much as we would hope for more resources and more leadership from the national level and from the state. We're bypassing the opportunity to be grateful for the community-based responses that we are so blessed to have in this community. We're rising up to meet these challenges and do something differently together, and we have no choice. With all the challenges outlined and the pressures, the future is going to be radically different than the past, and that future is now. When we, when I look at these informal encampments that exist across our community and across the country, that's, that's the future with the kind of wealth extraction that we have in this economy and with our climate challenges, and I see them not so much as unsanctioned encampments, but informal settlements or informal communities, which is really normal in countries that have a wealth divide like ours does. I think people that we call homeless people might be better regarded as internally displaced persons, which is a very normal thing in countries with a lot of poverty, with wealth divide, with other turmoil and injustices. There's a pipeline to the streets that's getting wider and wider, and more and more people are getting kicked in, and what's driving that, the data shows, is eviction, housing costs, and jail, jail involvement. There's a pipeline from jail to the streets, and once you're down there, it's like a B-trap, those wasp traps where it's easy to fall in, and then it's really hard to climb back out, now more than ever. For many reasons, the future's going to be radically different than the past, and I believe we need to support policies and practices and solutions that are practicing for that radically different future, which is already here, that promote the best possible outcomes, given current practical reality. So when I say Nickerson gives me a lot of inspiration and hope, where I find that is ordinary community members, faith communities, Just Housing Olympia, building relationships with people that have fallen into that B-trap, right, and saying, "We're not going to, you're not going to be stuck down there by yourself. We're going to strengthen the relationships between those of us that are still housed and those that have fallen through. We're going to get to know you, we're going to meet you where you are because we see you as part of the solution to this, this whole systemic mess." And they've, Just Housing Olympia doesn't get mentioned a lot by this, by our organization, but they've quietly been the ones bringing in the faith partners really successfully, and I think it's time to celebrate the success of the Nickerson Encampment, which is innovative and cost-effective, and empowering, and lifting people up, and broaden that policy to informal settlements and communities more generally. I also just want to say that I hear a lot from this organization about how we're new at this, and that's often something I hear that's designed to protect us from criticism or accountability. I think knowing that we're so new at this, we need to take direction from the people that have been doing this work for years and the people that are living the reality Lastly, I'll just say, the, our homelessness response community working group has asked for, has asked for our response to balance compassion and accountability, and in all of my experience, accountability requires a sense of community, connection, and belonging, which incidentally are some of the keys to overcoming chemical dependency, drug dependency, is connection, community, and belonging. So I support those unconventional, experimental, frankly, approach at Nickerson that we took a risk on last summer, and I would like to see that continue. I'd like to see us, I'd like to see us adopt that at Fourth Avenue, and if there's a better location that becomes available, that's comparable, and that's, that allows for this community to continue building on their strengths, then that's great. I haven't heard anyone of the Fourth Avenue Bridge residents say, "It's here or nowhere." It's, it's just we haven't provided an alternative. I had, I had prepared an alternate motion, not knowing how things were going to go tonight, and I'll just mention that a piece that I would have liked to see was that the city of Olympia shall pursue a strategy of culturally appropriate, culturally humble, community facilitation and organization in partnership with faith organizations, service providers, and our constituents living unsheltered as our preferred response to informal or unsanctioned I would, I'd like to check the temperature of the group about adding that to the motion as an amendment. That's all.
You'd need to make another amendment if you, if you want to do that.
Another amendment would be required.
I would second that.
So you made a motion to amend with adding that paragraph, and it's been seconded?
And that paragraph is in front of you all? It's the very bottom of the page I handed out earlier tonight. So, "The city of Olympia shall pursue a strategy of culturally appropriate, culturally humble, community facilitation and organization in partnership with faith organizations, service providers, and our constituents living unsheltered as our preferred response to informal or unsanctioned encampments."
I guess like...
Can I nitpick again?
Yeah.
I just have to say, I don't, I won't know how to tell staff to respond to that.
I don't even know what some of those things mean.
The amendment made by Councilmember Gilman helped me understand, I believe, where the council's going. That additional paragraph is confusing to me and lacks common definition, and so I think if you want something straightforward that you expect us to fulfill, I would urge you to keep it simple.
Okay, so there's a motion. Anyone else want to speak to the motion? Councilmember Gilman.
So I strongly agree with the assertions that you're making. I also think in this, this complicated decision-making, that making a very simple motion to take care of the action that's required tonight, and then continuing to work on this conversation about culturally appropriate, appropriate and humble engagement and facilitation, I would value continuing to work together with you on that, but I would, I would really prefer the one-sentence motion in this situation of legislating from the dais without work ahead of time.
I can agree with that. All right. Councilmember Rollins.
I can certainly agree to that, to just keeping it simple tonight. I just really want to appreciate the approach taken at Nickerson, that we were able to take a risk on, and I'd like to do some more work with Councilmember Gilman and perhaps another colleague to, to really make that clear, that that's, that's in line with our May 15, 2018 Resolution 1942.
Councilmember Partially.
I will have to agree with Councilmember Gilman, and I'm more than willing to work with you. Keeping it simple at this time is the best thing, but I seconded it because I felt that it should be heard and discussed.
Okay, so Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Shelby. I just want to echo that, and, but also point out, you know, that I love your sentiment, and, and the fact is that about three-quarters of the paragraph that I'm looking at is already city policy, and so it's important, I think, to continue the conversation and make sure that it's really a mantra of our work, that we're operationalizing what is policy, and then at that point, if we believe, we should amend our policies around how we're culturally appropriate or how we work with partners at all intersections of our work. To me, that's, that's the time to do that. So thank, thank you for your comments, though, because it's an important reminder.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded to amend the previous motion that was amended. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Did you, I'm sorry. Don't we moving on the amendment? Yep.
Yes.
Okay, there's just crickets. So...
Say it again.
So I would say that it did not pass.
Yes.
Never had no response. All right. Wow, okay, so we are...
We have an amendment on the table, the regular motion. I'm sorry, we have a motion on the table. The motion as amended by Councilmember Gilman, I believe, is on the floor.
The motion to amend...
The motion as amended by Councilmember Gilman is on the floor.
So it's, okay. So, all in favor of the amended motion? Look at my attorney, make sure we get this right. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes. All right, we now are moving on to special recognition. Thanks for your patience. We are recognizing World Bone Marrow Day, Donor Day, and that was brought to us by Councilmember Partially, and so I'm going to have Councilmember Partially walk us through this.
Whereas each year in the United States, there are between 800,000 and 1.2 million people diagnosed with bone marrow-related diseases such as lymphomas, leukemias, multiple myeloma, sickle cell anemia, and all forms of mild dysplasia. In the case of leukemia, anaplastic anemia, and rare genetic disorders, 75% of these people will be under the age of 25, whereas every three minutes, an American is diagnosed with blood cancer. And whereas leukemia kills more children than any other type of cancer, and whereas most of these diseases were once considered fatal until the development of bone marrow transplantation. And whereas 25 to 30% of patients needing bone marrow transplantation will find a matching donor within their family, the remaining 70 to 75% must hope that a comparado stranger can be found in a national bone marrow registry. And whereas only 2% of the United States population exists on the national registry. And whereas a white patient has a 77% chance of finding a match from a national registry, African-American patients have a 23% chance, Asian or Pacific Islander patients have a 41% chance, Hispanic or Latino patients have a 46% chance, Native American patients have a 57% chance. And whereas over 3,000 people die each year because they cannot find a match. And whereas the increasing the number of bone marrow transplants through increased matches decreases the cost, thus increasing accessibility. And whereas increasing the number of people registering with bone marrow programs, especially those of diverse ethnic background, increases the chance of providing effective therapy for patients with bone marrow disease. And now therefore be it resolved that the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim September 21, 2019, as Olympia Bone Marrow Donor Day in recognition of World Bone Marrow Donation Day, signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this day, 10th day of September 2019, Olympia City Council. Cheryl Selby, mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Partially, for bringing that forward. Councilmember Cooper.
Oh, did she have something?
Just that, I wanted to say that it seems kind of anticlimactic after what we talked about before, but when bone marrow transplants were begun 20 years ago, they cost over $1 million to $2 million per patient. Today, we've gotten down to $100,000 to $200,000, which makes it a little bit more reachable to the average family, especially if medical insurance is not available. It is in our best interest to get some of these high-level procedures done all the time. Medical care costs in the United States are outrageous, but the more we do something, the cheaper it gets, because the more doctors that are doing it, it can become an everyday thing. And as an oncologist, anytime I can beat cancer, I'm happy. Anytime I can help a child live beyond eight years old, I'm happy. I am against cancer.
All right, and did somebody else have their, yeah, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you for being against cancer. I am too. In fact, my dad is...
It's unanimous.
Yeah, it's unanimous. My dad is a two-time stem cell transplant survivor, so thank you very much for bringing this to the table, and I just encourage everyone to join the marrow registry, join the stem cell registry. It'd be great if we could get to the point in our society where being on those registries is as common as having the organ donor on your driver's license. It's super common, and the more that we can do to bring access, because my father was really lucky that he was able to use his own stem cells the first time and his sister's the second time. That's not a commonality within, within any of these conversations, particularly marrow. So thank you for bringing this to the table, and thank you to our community for stepping up to the plate.
All right, anybody else? Item 2A, going, going, gone. All right, we are now on to our time in the evening when we receive public comment. We provide a half an hour, 30 minutes, at the beginning of the, well, it's not really the beginning anymore of the meeting, but, so we have 30 minutes, and then we have more people than can be, you can fit in that first 30 minutes. So we'll do 30 minutes, we'll get on with the rest of the business meetings, so our staff that are hanging with us so they can do their presentations, they can get that done and get home to their families, and then we'll come back for whatever's remaining on the list. And so just a few guidelines. You know, our intention up here is to foster civic engagement. We're committed, committed to creating a space where all people can express their views and opinions directly to us, and we have all a shared responsibility to make that happen. We want everyone to participate without judgment or fear. If you don't get heard this evening, you can also email us or call us, everything, all of our contact information's on the website. If you need more than three minutes to finish your thoughts, you can leave written comments with Kelly over here to my right, and we'll receive a copy after the meeting. With that, you have three minutes, there's a countdown clock. A lot of people signed up. It's already getting well into the evening, so if you could keep your comments concise, and if somebody's already said something, maybe you don't need to repeat it. So here we go. Number one, John Pettit. Number two, Jeff Sowers. Number three, Shanti Maai.
Good evening, City Council. I, I'm very shocked with what I saw tonight. I have great, great appreciation for your viewpoint, Mayor Shelby. I, I think the issue here has to do a lot with people not defining certain things. You have unsanctioned, and you have mitigated. Let's not confuse these. This is part of where other areas like Lacey and Thurston County have a problem, because you have to have a bar of behavior that goes along with mitigated sites. That is why many of the people that are not in a mitigated site don't want to go there. You're not allowed to perhaps be using drugs. You're not allowed to be performing and using alcohol. The concept of having unsheltered sites is a concept that is inconceivable, and it lacks, it lacks a real consideration for all the people in those sites. There's people that are being taken advantage of. There are mean people in there. There's people that are participating in a drug culture that runs rampant within that type of group of people. I have to tell you, I was very against your Plum Street Village. Well, it was nice to see some good results. The city of Olympia stepped up and spends lots of money, about $1,700 per little house per month, to help these people get on their feet. One thing that's common about all of those people, they made a choice that they would have to leave the drug culture out. they made a choice that they would have to leave the drug culture out, and they'd have to leave the other environment out so they can get their life moving forward. The concept that people think they're being compassionate by not helping people move towards something and cleaning their lives up, getting a help, getting treatment, that's so far outside of my understanding. You're compassionate because you want them to sleep outside. And then here's the next issue. I hear this "culture" word. Well, if it's their culture they use drugs, then we need to provide a site for them to use drugs. That is ridiculous. People aren't against homeless. They're against people that are drug abusers, offering drugs to their kids, stealing things from households. This is where our problem is. We're sick and tired of behavior that we wouldn't want our kids around. Unfortunately, as the city fathers, parents as such, you should be in that same boat. You shouldn't want those people around our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Sowers, followed by Shanti Mai, followed by Amy LaCroy.
My name is Jeff Sowers. Thank you for hearing my comments tonight. And thank you to the council for your action previously. I was very heartened by that. I came down here feeling angry about what was going on underneath the Fourth Avenue Bridge, but I'm feeling a lot better about it now, honestly. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart for the statements and actions that were made tonight. It was very heartening for me. I grew up in this community. I lived in the house just on the other side of the Fourth Avenue Bridge when I was a teenager. I remember homeless people living under the bridge then. That was before it was removed, when they put in the roundabout and the new bridge. So, what's going on there touches me. And frankly, I've been outraged and even horrified by what I've seen unfolding down there. The rocks, that was... I could not understand the rocks. To help the council understand what its obligations are under international human rights law, because I think this comes down to a human rights issue. I'd like to tell you about a report that was issued by the Special Rapporteur to the UN Human Rights Commission on housing, adequate housing. Her name was, is, and I'm going to send you guys a copy of this, Leilani Farha. She's a Canadian lawyer and human rights expert, appointed by the UN Special Rapporteur on adequate housing. She went around the world, including the United States, looking at housing and focused in particular on informal settlements. And she has some really interesting things to say about how a city should relate to these settlements and how you can formulate policies that respect human rights. Couple of things the report makes clear. Everyone has a human right to adequate housing, and the failure of states and local governments to protect this fundamental right is among the most pervasive human rights violations in the world today. And as a consequence of this failure, informal settlements have arisen. And the people in these informal settlements, they have a fundamental human right to be secure in their shelter where they're at. It's a human rights issue. They have a de facto tenancy right based on international human rights law. And any action to forcibly evict these people is a serious human rights violation. The Special Rapporteur calls on governments to immediately cease and desist from seeking to justify the evictions. When relocation is necessary, she goes through and details some recommendations that mirrored a lot of what I heard from the council tonight in the motion that was adopted. So, I won't read further because I'm out of time, but I want to, again, appreciate what was done tonight, and I support the action. I'll look forward to seeing how this progresses. Thank you.
Thank you. Shanti Mai, followed by Reverend Amy LaCroy, followed by Reverend Carol Johnson.
My name is Shanti Mai. I live in the 900 block of Wilson Street, near Lyons Park. Every time there's a heavy rain on our street, we end up with a really wide swath of water rushing down the street on both sides. And our street is narrow and has no sidewalks. So, that means the many people walking up to the park or to the stores or to the buses are pushed further into the middle of the street to walk. And I'm really concerned about stormwater, especially as we are looking at infilling our neighborhoods. The fact that that's been going on for years and could get worse is a concern to me. Last February, I had a three-inch flood in my daylight basement. And when the plumber came to look at it and my insurance agent, they both determined that groundwater was seeping in through the concrete and into my basement. Then when I hear that there may be a lot more infill up further, up the hill from me, I'm thinking, gosh, that could get worse and worse and worse. What I have given you in the handouts is how much the flood remediation costs. And it's not covered by insurance because groundwater is not considered something that's covered. My house was built in 1939, but the previous owners put a French drain in the driveway as well as a sump pump at the bottom of the driveway. And even so, over the years, the home had flooded, which is what I was told when I had my inspection. But this flood was the worst by far. Because of that, I am just concerned that when people look at you guys, when you look at infilling the community, that you think of safety issues such as danger from floods for the people that are already there, for the homes that are already there. That doesn't include the damage that happened to items in the basement, a bed, an armchair, a sewing machine. I mean, there was a big list. And I got no recompense because it wasn't covered by insurance. Please protect us in our homes as we grow as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor, Reverend Amy LaCroy, followed by Reverend Carol Johnson, followed by Shannon Partey.
Mayor Selby and councilmembers, Steve Hall, city staff. I'm Reverend Dr. Amy LaCroy with First Christian Church in Olympia. And I had a big speech, but now I get to... You're welcome. I won't say it. But I do want to thank you and say that I am grateful to you for your good discussion tonight and for passing this motion and giving us the relief from sweeping the camp tomorrow so that we can do the hard work that is before us. And to affirm for you that First Christian Church is committed to partnering with our friends and neighbors at the camp. The residents of the camp asked us specifically for help, and we're responding to that request. We will be partnering with them to help set up a structure for self-government. And we're committed to meeting with them on a weekly basis to help ensure that the rules and their system of governance is actually, they live by that. And to partner with them in any other ways. We're also committed to partnering with the city, with the other nonprofit organizations who are already providing services. I am part of Concerned Clergy, and I bring their greetings. And the Concerned Clergy of Olympia's pledge to be a part of this and to do our best. So, I hope that we can all roll up our sleeves and get to work and really be effective in helping create a really stable, positive camp environment. And hopefully, if it needs to move from Fourth Avenue, that we'll have a stable, strong community ready to move. And that it will be a really, it's the best possible... It's good for our community. I know there's so much fear out there, but it's good for our community, for the camp and the residents of the camp, who are not those people. They're human beings, just like the rest of us, and have dreams and hopes and aspirations just like the rest of us. And if we can work together, they will be an amazing, important part of our community and have so many gifts and strengths to offer. So, if we can set our fear aside, or move past our fear, or move forward in spite of fear, may it be so. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Reverend Carol Johnson, followed by Shannon Partey, followed by the Raging Grannies.
I'm Carol Johnson, a member of First United Methodist Church of Olympia, retired United Methodist clergy, and a member of the Justice and Advocacy Committee. We have been steadfast supporters every Monday night in providing food, clothing, supplies to the Fourth Avenue Bridge encampment. We had a very successful meeting on September 4th at First United Methodist Church with local nonprofits, faith communities, Clark Gilman, Renata Rollins, and a representative from Nathaniel Jones. This is an example of stakeholders coming together to create partnerships for change and action. We believe that this is a way forward to begin creating solutions for unsheltered citizens. I understand that this camp has a vexing problem for city officials, councilmembers, and the community. Some may come to the point where they say, we've done enough. This can't go on. This is a danger, a nuisance. It's illegal. Some have said, we can't house all those people, or these people really can't take care of themselves, or you've not really done anything worthwhile in your life. You would not say that if you got to know Elvis, Opie, Liz, Natalie, Sean, Jamie, Mickey, Mike, and others. They are doing worthwhile things right now as leaders of their community. They all want to stay together because they view themselves as family, no matter where they go. They keep watch at night to protect themselves from hostile actors. They have their own camp rules and problem-solving process. This sounds like self-governance to me. As for First United Methodist Church, we will always support them, love them, and provide encouragement in their journey. It is a joy and a duty to our fellow children of God. Stop the sweeps. Do not destroy this community. And a piece of scripture I just want to read from Matthew. "I was naked, and you clothed me. I was sick, and you visited me. I was in prison, and you came to me. Then the righteous will answer him, 'Lord, when did we see you hungry and feed thee, or thirsty and give thee drink? And when did we see thee a stranger and welcome thee, or naked and clothed thee? And when did we see thee sick or in prison and visit thee? And the king will answer them, 'Truly I say to you, as you did it to one of the least of these, my brethren, you did it to me.'" Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon Partey, followed by the Raging Grannies, followed by Opie Taylor.
Good evening, council. In Martin versus City of Boise, the Ninth Court Circuit emphasized that its holding was a narrow one, stating that we in no way dictate to the city that it must provide sufficient shelter for the homeless or allow anyone who wishes to sit, lie, or sleep on the streets at any time and at any place. We hold only that so long as there is a greater number of homeless individuals in a jurisdiction, than the number of available beds and shelters, the jurisdiction cannot prosecute homeless individuals for involuntarily sitting, lying, and sleeping in public. Bottom line, don't read the court's decision in Martin as supporting broader protections for the homeless population than the court intended. Some criminal and all civil infractions are still a part of the government arsenal when confronting lawlessness. I have some concerns about the negative effects of homeless encampments located in critical areas in the City of Olympia, and worry the City of Olympia is allowing violations of its own local ordinance to occur without holding anyone responsible. Olympia Municipal Code 1832100 states that it is the intent of the OMC 18.32 to implement the State of Washington Growth Management Act and its guidelines. The countywide planning policies and the Olympia Comprehensive Plan by protecting critical areas, associated buffers, and their functions and values while allowing reasonable use of property by, among other things, directing activities not essential in such areas to other locations, establishing enforcement tools and processes designed to deter activities in violation of this chapter, minimizing pollution of wetlands, streams, and fish-bearing waters, and maintaining their associated wildlife habitat. OMC 32.110 states, among other things, that the city shall regulate uses of activities and development within critical areas and the corresponding buffers and setbacks. OMC 32.111 provides for certain exemptions from the provisions of OMC 18.32, including but not limited to passive recreation such as fishing, hiking, or birdwatching. This provision does not exempt homeless encampments in the critical areas. Regardless, OMC 18.32.110 emphasizes that such an exemption is not an endorsement to degrade a critical area. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I have you guys listed, there's two names, and then the Raging Grannies. So, if you're going to come up all at once, you can do your three minutes altogether? Or do you want three minutes individually?
Well, we don't need a full three minutes individually. I think we can do it in the three minutes.
I just want to be clarifying for expectations here.
Good evening. My name is Burtai Harvrove. The Olympia Raging Grannies came here tonight to urge you to postpone any action on the encampment under the Fourth Street Bridge until everyone there has a safe place to go. The action that the city council is taking and planning to take is essentially social work. No one is building the low-income housing that is absolutely necessary. The city council can do something about this. The city council should consider and pass an ordinance requiring all developers within the city, those building these huge buildings in the downtown, and all developers on the east side and on the west side, to dedicate 20% of the housing they build for low-income people. If you can do it legally, make the ordinance retroactive so it will affect those developers who have already received huge tax breaks from the city.
My name is Patricia Home, and I really appreciate Jim Cooper and Lisa Partially talking about the larger issues that are causing all these homeless in Renata and so forth. Because I really, Nathaniel, you know, I just really appreciate that you understand that this is not a problem that's going to be going away. It will probably be getting worse, and we must deal with it. And so, I really appreciate all of your comments and thoughtfulness tonight. It warms my heart to hear so much. And I think if, in the future, I think there will be some money, there would be, if we were to pass a Green New Deal, which allows Medicare for All, guaranteed jobs for anybody that wants one. It would really help. We need more income equality. You know, that's a big part of the homeless situation, the houseless situation. So, I just appreciate so much. And that we're going to say. And I guess we probably...
So, we are going to... I know you guys. I've seen you before. So, we're going to restart the clock.
One song.
For one song.
Just one song.
Actually, you can take more, but you just have to do it up. Okay.
Oh, give me a home, a place of my own. All I need is a safe place to stay. I speak out of need, not of anger or greed. A home of my own is the way. Home, home of my own. All I need is a safe place to stay. I speak out of need, not of anger or greed. A home of my own is the way. Would you sleep in the park where it's scary and dark? No, you wouldn't, not on a bed. It really gets old when you're hungry and cold and all of your clothing is wet. Home, home of my own. All I need is a safe place to stay. I speak out of need, not of anger or greed. A home of my own is the way.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I've got Opie Taylor, followed by Lauren Freeman.
I'm Opie, and I just, I want to thank you. I want to thank the city council that I'm hoping to work with you and to better our community. Thank you very much, from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. I've got Lauren Freeman, followed by Elvis Lambert. I've got Lauren Freeman, followed by Elvis Lambert.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm here on behalf of the Up With Down Syndrome Group, located here in the South Puget Sound area, to promote the Buddy Walk on October 5th. It will be operating out, fire stationed by the Ostrom Mushroom Farm at Meridian and Sillicum Road. We had sent a letter to the mayor and to the police chief inviting you to participate. We didn't get a response, and this evening I kind of get an idea of why maybe you were busy. So I apologize for any impatience that I may have held in my heart toward this whole situation. I understand much better now. But this is just a celebration of citizens with Down Syndrome, proclaiming their value to our community, their abilities and contribution to our community. There are other people in our city, other than those that you've heard from tonight. And I just want to make sure that you recognize that although crises abound, apparently, but there are other populations, other people, who have a need for involvement, inclusion in our community. And so I urge your participation on October 5th, if you're available. There will not be an open mic on that particular occasion, so be assured that we'll take care of you if you come, October 5th. The Buddy Walk, you have the letter there. Thank you very much for your time and patience with this non-crisis. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your understanding. I've got Elvis Lambert, followed by Kevin Stone. Elvis? Elvis left? Elvis left the building. Dun-dun-dun. All right, is Kevin Stone still in the room? All right. We'll come back. Is Nicole Lambert, Nicole Alexander, in the room? Okay.
Okay, this has been very enlightening. I'm speaking as a constituent and a person that has lived in the city for 20 years. And wow, I've seen a lot. All I can, and I feel kind of, there's huge issues out there. I can only speak because of how I'm being affected. I live next to one of the black houses, okay? We got some problems with those black houses, and I've had to deal with it over the years. I have a homeless encampment that resides about four feet from where I try to sleep at night. I have had to make calls to dispatch, calls to 911, try to deal with it on my own. What are we going to do when people don't have any place to stay and they come up into the neighborhoods? This isn't public property. This is one of the 23 black houses owned by Dwayne Steppenmore. And we had one of them burned down lately. Apparently, it was vacant. That was about a street over from me. I have a person that's been living in the garage that I can't get out of there. Now we have people living in the cars. We have how many people living in the house? What I would like is for city code to pay a little more attention to this, because I've dealt with it as long as I can, and I'm losing my health. I try to work. I try to obey the law. I try to pay my taxes, and it's getting harder because of my distress next door. It can be dealt with. He can run it as an adult family home. If there's more than six individuals that are living there, he can do it the way everyone else has to do it. There's just a lot of violations. I've had to call Fire Marshall because of the wood stove that's in the garage. It's just something we need to think about. Public property is one thing. This is a landlord that collects $1,600 a month for a piece of property that's, there was so much garbage piled up on it all summer long. And now I have an RV that's pulled in. I try, I can't talk to these individuals. The police are well aware. They tell me not to interact. So what can be done? That's my question.
Thank you. All right, we have time for one more speaker before we get back to our regular part of the business meeting. I've got Mark Perry. Mark Perry, anybody? There we go. Mark will be our last speaker for the first 30 minutes.
I almost decided not to read this, following the initial comments by the city council. But after the mayor's comments and the city manager, I thought I would anyway. After listening to an interview with Greta Thunberg, I feel compelled to share two messages with you. The first is from the U.S. Youth Climate Strike, which is made up of eight national youth-led climate groups who have articulated a set of demands that have been endorsed by 177, yes, I counted, organizations and groups nationwide. Among their demands is this: Welcome those displaced by the cumulative effects of the climate crisis, economic inequality, violence, and lack of opportunity. The people, some of you, would like to sweep out of sight our economic refugees displaced by a community where the rich among us refuse to share. Only the rich are asking you to herd displaced persons out of sight so they can be out of mind, non-people, hidden in the woods. At the Fourth Avenue Bridge, they're too visible. By being visible, they face us, the rich, with our greed and selfishness. They evoke our own fear of being exiled, shunned, and deprived. If we can't welcome the poor into our community, what kind of people are we? The youth of this entire planet are making a clear demand that we welcome these displaced people into this community. That is a very optimistic demand, as benefits the young. I'm less optimistic about you who have the power to make what I had expected to be tomorrow, another exercise in the brutality I watched unfold during your last sweep of people. I helped move those people out of your sight, frightened, some alone--
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Some clinging to loved ones--
Thank you, sir.
We loaded everything they own--
I'm asking you to respect--
--into a small trailer--
Our agreed process is accountable that we limit public comment to three minutes. Point of order, please, sir. Would you discontinue your public comment time? I think we have an option to cut the mic. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So that brings our first 30 minutes of public comment to conclusion. We are going to move forward with adopting our consent calendar. I need a motion. So moved?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or polls this evening? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have consent approved. We're going on to, we don't have any other business, plenty of business. Other business, what's that?
4A. We do have a public hearing.
We don't have other business, we have a public hearing. So we are going to move right to that. And I'd like to invite Franide to come up and tee up what is now going to be a transition from one part of an agenda to another. And so this is a public hearing this evening on an application for a master-use permit for Astound Broadband LLC. And so a master-use permit, as defined by the OMC, is an agreement whereby the city may grant general permission to a service provider to enter use and occupy the right-of-way for the purpose of locating facilities. So Fran, I'd like you to help us walk through why we're having a public hearing tonight.
Fran has made application for a renewal. So what I'd like to do this evening is provide an overview of the request for the master-use permit, which is required in order for them to install and operate the facilities that are currently in the right-of-way and those that they may wish to update or renew. And this is all in order to operate infrastructure needed to provide telecommunication and internet access to potential customers. So Astound Broadband first secured a master permit in September of 2014, and since that time, they have installed their lines consistent with their proposal and consistent with our permitting and engineering design and development standards. So their initial permit is lapsing, and they chose to request to renew. So consistent with the Olympia, excuse me, Municipal Code, Chapter 11.06.030, there are a number of things that they're required to do, such as have their FCC license, be registered with the Washington Utilities and Transportation Commission, have a City of Olympia business license. So all of these are part of the process. At this time, they're not requesting a substantial expansion of their system, basically consistent with what they've already provided via the map that's included in the staff report this evening. Based on their proposal, they're not planning any major projects that would have substantial disruption outside of the ordinary for construction and installation of projects. Consistent, again, with what they're proposing, there is sufficient capacity within the right-of-way to install and continue to maintain the infrastructure that they've provided so far. Anything, as I mentioned earlier, any activity within the right-of-way would require a permit consistent with the standard. So the master permit is kind of on top of and just ensures that these additional conditions would be met. There's also a question about the effect on public health, safety, and welfare. Public health would be minimal. In safety, there's always an opportunity, or potential, I shouldn't say opportunity, a potential, that there be safety associated with construction. But of course, best management practices would be taken as part of any construction activity. And in regards to welfare, Astound Broadband provides tele, excuse me, I'll slow down, telecommunications services that may be used by the community to advance their business, positively affecting their health, happiness, and fortune, so addressing the welfare situation. Also, in regards to location, any proposed infrastructure improvement or facility installation would be reviewed and approved as a part of the permitting process. And then finally, that they are in, that they be consistent with federal, state, and any other applicable laws or regulations. Their application states as such. Their proposal is consistent with what the city's OMC requires. And there is a gentleman representing Astound Broadband here this morning, excuse me, this evening, Roger Williamson. So if there are additional questions before the public hearing is opened, be available to answer those.
All right. Thanks, Fran. Any quick, Councilmember Gilman?
Fran, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, how many people, how many different firms have fiber through Olympia?
Currently, we have master-use permits only with Astound Broadband, also known as WAVE, and the second is Noel Communications, which is going through a transformation to wholesale networks, and will see them in the near future. Those are the two master permits that we have currently.
Okay.
So aside from the other larger telecommunications providers.
Well, that's what I'm, so two smaller firms in addition to whatever's the current name for Quest and Comcast?
Comcast, yeah.
Okay.
And those are under separate franchises as larger utilities. These are smaller master permits.
Good. And I think my second question's probably better asked of Mr. Williamson. Hello. Thank you for coming in tonight. I'm just trying to understand whether the map and the blue lines, like, is service only available on those main drags, or is that some sort of trunk lines or something that we're seeing?
Within the city of Olympia, we strictly provide services to commercial, no residential services, but we build off of our fiber optics all the time. We can branch off of that, that fiber optics as needed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, those are questions I was going to ask. That's great, because everyone knows about Comcast and some of the bigger utilities that they pay bills, they pay their bills to, but we haven't heard about Astound. So thank you for asking that. Any other, Councilmember Cooper?
Actually, just signed up on a WAVE cable email address from Oak Harbor today professionally for work. So my question is, what's your plans for rolling out residential service in the city of Olympia? Because we need some competition.
I don't know of any long-term plans for that. I am not involved in those talks.
Pass it on to management, please.
We do have a fiber-to-the-home project in Black Diamond and in Yelm, but those are big projects. Typically, they usually start with new developments, new construction. We don't typically overbuild over someone like Comcast or CenturyLink.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Parsley?
This just may be my lack of understanding in our options there. Options one and two look very similar to each other, except for two says that we would develop an ordinance. I'm not sure I understand the advantages of an ordinance versus the option number one.
We have three options in our packet, Fran?
Yeah, right, right.
Sorry to ask that. I'm--
I printed it out. There you go.
I think one is to take it as is, the other is to make additional conditions.
Yeah, any additional conditions.
It's additional conditions. Thank you. That's all clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, it's all ours. Okay, so if there's no further questions, I'm going to go ahead and open public comment. So now open public, I'm sorry, public hearing on an application for a master-use permit for Astound Broadband LLC. Nobody's signed up, and so we can open it up. If anybody's just having this raging need to get up and grab a mic, it's available. We can do karaoke. Anybody want to speak during the hearing? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I do have a motion that accommodates this, and I'll just go ahead and read the motion for the sake of time. "I move to approve the application for a master-use permit and direct staff to prepare a master-use permit ordinance."
So moved. Or second, I guess. You moved.
Yes, second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, so we are done with our regular agenda. It's just a time for council reports. I just have a, oh, I'm sorry. Yep. We have more people. This might go quickly, actually. I just heard from, I've got Charlie Pierce, Lauren Kingsman, Kingman, Lauren Kingman. Okay. I've got Ty Gundle, followed by Robert Bruce.
Hi, my name is Ty Gundle, and I'm with Just Housing Olympia. And more than anything, I just wanted to echo Jeff and thank you all from the bottom of my heart. So a lot of the camp residents that had signed up have already left, weren't here to speak, and most of them went to go share the news with us. here to speak, and most of them went to go share the news with everybody else. So I think, I think it's a good night for them over there. So really, thank you. It's saving, I think, really our entire community a lot of harm and trauma to take this step. I mostly stayed, too, just to honor Steve Hall's and Cooper's requests that if we speak to share how we hope to be a part of the solution moving forward. And as many of you already know, Just Housing has continued to work with Nickerson Encampment to support them with getting access to basic services like propane, laundry, showers, survival supplies. We've helped to facilitate self-governance structures in partnership with the United Churches of Olympia and other faith communities. And so it's been a really great learning process to be a part of that and see what's been possible to do with that camp over the past year. And that's absolutely something that, you know, we've started to do with other encampments, including the Fourth Avenue Bridge, and absolutely intend to continue doing that. As we all know, First Christian is not new to this. I don't think they're going to need a lot of expertise from, from us or others that have been working with Nickerson. I trust that they're going to do a really great job, but we're absolutely going to be there to help support them in any way that we can and to continue expanding that to other encampments just for our near-term future. We're already exploring fiscal partnership with another local nonprofit so that we can expand our encampment support programs like garbage removal, laundry support, survival support, all of that, just because we continue to see that as being a huge need in our community to help mitigate the safety and health concerns that we see every day. So just again, thank you, and we'll absolutely, absolutely be there to do everything we can to make, make this work. And last thing I'll say is just when you guys did the stay of the eviction of the Nickerson Encampment last year, I know you heard that night, too, a lot of concerns about how that was going to be a disaster, and I think we saw something really beautiful and creative and inspiring come out of that. And I have every hope that we're going to see the same thing with this, with the step that you've all taken tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Robert Bruce, followed by Brad Morale.
Hi. I wanted to thank you for staying the sweep. I, like, I, I really think that we should be paying maybe closer attention to the Nickerson model. I think it's, like, promising a lot of great things. I've, like, had experience, like, coming to the Nickerson camp every week to do, like, trash pickup and getting to meet, like, the organizers there and develop relationships with folks. And, yeah, it's just like a really unique and inspiring thing that's happening. And it's, it's something that we will need to take care of people while we come up with better solutions, you know? I mean, in the presentation, like, Colin was saying, oh, we might need one or two or however many mitigation sites. And it seems like that's true based on how many people we know are, like, unsheltered. So obviously, having many mitigation sites, it seems like that's far off, or who knows when that might happen. But in the meantime, people have to survive. People have to, you know, stay out of the elements, and this is a way to do that and also take advantage of the leadership and expertise of the people who live in the camps. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Bob Morale?
He's dead.
Pardon?
My Uncle Bob's dead. I'm Brad.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. No problem. Uncle Bob's cool.
Sorry. Sorry about your uncle, too.
Yeah. So I'm here strictly as a citizen. I want to thank each one of you. I can't even imagine how you do what you do. You're the governing body of the city that I live in, and I'm a part of it. Steve Hall had said he was going to challenge everybody that got the mic to do something. I don't know that I heard that challenge yet, so let me give you my quick story. Point-in-time census six, seven years ago, Anna Schleck asked me to do it. I went out and walked in the woods, and I found out I was driving by homeless, houseless people, and I was totally oblivious to it. That started a quest on my part to get involved everywhere. I've been at all the different meetings that you folks have had. I go to Just Housing Olympia meetings. I'm not part of any organization. I happen to be a pastor in Tumwater. I think that you've got such a great handle on all the different parts of this. It's so involved. It's time that rather than just having meetings to hear from citizens, you challenge people who live here. I don't know what our population is, 28,000 people. If each one of us gave one hour, it would change our community. You get all the heat, you get all the pressure, it's all on you. Well, you know what? Michael Jackson is always in my head. I got to start with the man in the mirror. So the next round, and I appreciate that we're not going to throw more people out on the street, it breaks my heart, but it breaks my heart to listen to the heat that you all take in doing what you're doing for our city. Everybody has a position, everybody has a perspective. There's nothing we can't do if we really buy into community. I love watching parliamentary law. I love seeing how it all runs. It's exciting. Give me some constitutional stuff. But at the end of the day, we're all people, we're all human, we're all part of this community. So again, my ask would simply be, let's ramp up asking people to do something. Everybody who speaks, everybody who sends a letter, send back and say, come on, let's come and do this. Go spend time. I've been at Nickerson Camp, going to their homeowners' association. It's less contentious than the homeowners' association that I'm in. They have some great things that they're saying. I've been just going out and buying bags. I can't do much, but what little I can do. Somebody said he didn't have shoes. Went and found shoes. I found a girl in Tumwater that has a resource center, and she donated tents. So there's a lot of stuff we can do in not just filling the council chamber to get contentious with each other. So I think if you call on the community, I think you're going to find that the community is super resilient, and they need somebody to really challenge them. And Steve Hall, you said that, I just didn't hear the challenge, but let's not just talk about it, let's make it. So thank you so much. Really appreciate you.
Thank you. Linda Moniz, Rebecca Chrysler, Lisa Gelati, Will G., Hazel Culpepper, Becky Hayes, Ty Brown, Jeb Thorndon, Karen Ferguson, Lisa Illahi. Oh, winner, winner.
Hi. Thanks for hearing me out here. My name is Lisa Illahi. I live at 222 Bethel Street. I've lived at that residence for 27 years. It's right up the street from the old Olympia newspaper. And I'm here to talk about my concern, which is the Zola Project, which is on 205 Bethel Street. Right now, it's a one-story home, and it's been purchased. The plan is to convert it into a business, a vasectomy clinic, which I think is a good idea. And then the addition of another story on top with two apartments. They're going to add six parking spots. And so my concern is about the unintended consequences of just allowing these plans to go through without really studying and thinking about the traffic flow. These six parking spots, when you come downstate and turn up Bethel, these parking spots are going to go here. That means that whoever's going to go to this business, they can't just pull in the parking here. They're going to have to go up and either turn into the alley, turn into the alley by my house, turn into my driveway, or someone else's driveway. I'm really concerned about the traffic flow and the safety of pedestrians who use that alley. It's a very narrow alley. There's students, people who walk to downtown, people with families that, you know, use that alley to get up and down through the neighborhood. And I'm here for myself and others who can't speak, because I'm a little concerned about the process of the notice you give. You only give notice to people within 300 feet. So that's okay for people that live nearby, but it doesn't, doesn't give notice to anybody else with, within the neighborhood. There was one public notice sign that was really obscure in the bushes. I had to call Catherine McCoy and talk to her about that. She was kind enough to notify the gentlemen, and they put up two more signs. So that was very helpful. But I guess, you know, my concern is when I talked to the planner at the Artisan Group and Catherine McCoy, and I explained the traffic flow thing, they went, oh, yeah, good idea. Well, thank you for the compliment that it's a good idea. I live there, and I see everything. And the owner said, oh, we only anticipate having three cars a day. You don't know that. And I know the flow right now between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, it's very busy. So again, I'm concerned for safety, I'm concerned for traffic flow. I'm also concerned about the two apartments that are going to be up top. My understanding is he's dropping 1.7 million. He said we should be happy because he's putting in sidewalks and streetlights and landscape, but that's not enough. And again, unintended consequences is what I'm concerned about, and also worried about the potential of gentrification, which is what's leading to homelessness. Also, by the way, that sign was tagged recently by KOV, and I've had people camping in my backyard. So this is a systems issue, and I'd like you to consider as you're building. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I've got Katie Haddam, Mike Partial, Megan Gamble, Anthony Hing, Izzy Baldi, Russ Charbonneau. All right. That closes public comment for this evening. I appreciate everyone's patience, especially our last speaker, Ms. Illahi, for staying here the whole evening. Yeah. So I'm sure we'll have somebody contact her regarding that development. Anybody want to make some comments on public comment? Councilmember Gilman?
I appreciate what Ms. Illahi just said about it being a systems issue. And I'm particularly concerned about two things. First, that we're respecting the humanity of each person, and we're not calling people problems, right? That people are people, and there can be behaviors, there can be issues, there can be impacts on the environment, whatever else. But, but when the language blurs to create people into another, or the people are a camp, it, it stops us from being able to, to address their specific needs or to call on their gifts. So that's, that's concerning to me. And then this systems issue, I think that the opportunity in all of this, in terms of, as Reverend Dr. La Croix said about getting past our fears, that there are a lot of fears. There's, there are interactions that honestly scare people, right? You can't take away the feelings that somebody has. You can't take away the fear that they have. That's, that's real. But I think we can place it in a place more appropriate, rather than hollering at the person who's kind of, you know, struggling and, and doesn't have resources. We can aim it at, how do we address the things that we don't like in this town? I think it's through livable wages. I think it's through access to health care. I think it's through affordable housing. That's, that's the actions that we can be taking. So that's, that's my takeaway from everything that we listened to this evening is, let's, let's aim big at the systemic changes that can address this as a systems issue, and let's be kind to our brothers and sisters who are outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody? Councilmember Rollins, followed by Councilmember Jones?
Just really briefly, because I, I made a lot of comments earlier, but I want to speak to something that didn't come up a whole lot about, around this conversation in these chambers, but that we've gotten a lot of emails about, critical of, of our considering staying the camp, as well as, I know this conversation bubbles a lot on social media and Nextdoor and in our, in our kitchen tables and elsewhere. And that's the issue of how is the question of drug addiction and enforcement related to our challenge of homelessness? And I've noticed over the years, there's kind of, there's, it's become perceived that it's less okay to criticize homeless people, but it's okay to criticize drug users or drug addicts, and that we should just be having a zero-tolerance enforcement law and order, enforce the laws on the books, all of that. And I hear that, and we hear a lot from the community about that. I just want to, being real for a second, like, there is an active drug trade in maximum-security prisons. So rather than focusing on chasing windmills and, and trying to eliminate drug, like, trying to, like, getting really obsessed and focused on drugs, let's get underneath the, because let's face it, drugs is not a root cause of any problem. Drugs, drug use, drug addiction, et cetera, is a reflection of deeper root causes. So let's look at that. And everything that I've read and learned from the experts in our community, from our buke clinic, from the needle exchange, from folks that are, that are dealing with the opioid crisis on the frontlines day to day, is that it's all about facilitating connection and community, and that happens in nonjudgment, in a philosophy and practice of nonjudgment. And I get concerned that calls for increased law enforcement and, and just, or sweeping as a way to, if we think that's going to eliminate drug problems in this community, that actually only exacerbates the, the trauma, and drug use is, is a response to trauma. So I'm, again, I'm looking forward to crafting a statement about how we'd like to pursue a facilitation and organization and trauma-informed response to encampments. And I just, I think there's a bigger conversation there about drug use that we kind of tiptoe around, but I'd like to, I encourage a real conversation around that, and what are the root causes, and what can we do to heal in our community? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Mayor Salvi. So first of all, I just want to appreciate anyone who came out this evening, particularly to talk about the Fourth Avenue Bridge issue, homelessness, and this whole set of issues that we're dealing with tonight. I, I feel very positive about the level of discourse that we've had this evening, no matter what side of the issue you were on. People spoke clearly and spoke their heart, and I just very much appreciate that. I wanted to turn to staff and ask about Linda Nielsen's question. She lives next door to a black house. And...
For the viewing audience who want to clarify, maybe they don't know what that, she didn't clarify, but maybe you could.
She didn't either. There, there is a landlord in our community who is known for having painted his tenants' houses black, but there also appears to be a pattern of poor maintenance and questionable rent policies. I guess that's the best I can say. They seem problematic. In fact, I just recently visited the site that burned down on Puget Street. And my question for staff is, is code enforcement actively involved with these, this owner? And is there any report you can give us? I know I'm hitting you cold, but is there any report you can give us about the status of this situation?
I don't think we know it, and we'll get back to that. So I wrote down that not only the problems of the black house, but also homeless camp within four feet of her house and an RV on the street. So it sounds like there are a number of issues. I'll have to track down which of these we're aware of and can work on.
Probably a wood stove on that list as well.
Oh, that's right, the wood stove, yes.
Steve, I heard, I heard her comments as being all on the same property.
Yeah, I'll check and see if that's the case or not, yeah.
I'd really appreciate your getting back to us on that. I don't know about other council members or staff, but this is an issue that's very active in my communications. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Partially?
I won't go long. I went long first, but I just was hoping that we could potentially, as a council, start having the conversations that Steve introduced, which is looking at alternative spaces and sites for this camp, and what, what is going to work? Let's, let's do something positive and move beyond our, our debate and say, okay, if the Fourth Street has some environmental safety, health issues, what is a good site, and are we able to make that happen? And that's kind of where I'd like to go.
All right. That's all I have. So I'm going to save my mayor's report till next week for the sake of time. Councilmember Rollins, do you have anything to report?
I also don't have anything urgent. I'll save it for the next meeting.
Thanks. Councilmember Cooper?
Yes, Mayor Salvi, just two quick things. So the Regional Housing Council met before Labor Day. We continue to discuss the regional mitigation site at Carpenter Road. We've now seen a pretty solid proposal as well as budget for that, and I think the city manager's been discussing that with each of you individually. If you have questions, let me know. We'll look forward to hearing where our regional partners are at in that discussion at the next meeting. And we also talked really briefly about House Bill 1406 funds, and universally agreed that we should wait for the county's five-year mitigation, five-year homeless response plan. I'm mixing up all of the planning processes, so I apologize. The five-year plan to end homelessness from the county to come out, and then, as a group, look at focusing those funds together towards, towards a look at focusing those funds together towards, towards a high priority in that plan. So rather than putting money in front of planning, responding to the plan with, with those funds. We also had a finance committee meeting since we, we spoke last, where we dug in on the capital facilities plan and started talking about the next, the next budget cycle a little bit more in-depth. We also heard a set of early actions around the climate mitigation plan from Richoi. It was a really good presentation. I'd encourage you to access those documents, either from him or me, and we can send them to you. It's, it's, it's good stuff. Particularly, I wanna say, I'll thank Mayor, or Mayor Selby, thank you anyway, but thank, thank Councilmember Partially and Councilmember Jones for the participation in that work group and that study group. I'm, I'm really looking forward to having both a regional, a strong regional plan and a menu of other options that maybe are Olympia-centric, so. And then lastly, we, today we approved, I think, our first, our first scope of work with our, with our analysts. And to me, that's a huge moment, and I just wanna take a breath and respect it, because it's a decade in the works of getting to the point where we have the ability to bring extra analysis and extra policy support to the city council, because we have a staff that we continue to expect to do more than they should be doing in their daily job. So thank you to the whole staff team for, for helping us get here, and thank you for the council, to the council for supporting that, that work. I look forward to that, seeing that ecosystem report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
In the interest of time, I have nothing to report.
Okado. Councilmember Gilman?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Two calendar items. The, the Council of Neighborhood Associations met last night, and they have used a neighborhood matching grant to create a training for board members of recognized neighborhood associations around the city. And on Saturday, the 28th, from 9:00 to 1:30, in a location that they're still looking for, because the first one fell through, nonetheless. So if, if you are a, a board member or a leader in a recognized neighborhood association and wanna come spend a morning with people from other neighborhood associations talking about communications, recruitment, how to run a better meeting, this is, this is gonna be a, a great opportunity. And the second opportunity, I know you enjoy watching us on TV, but sometimes you wanna beat a meeting in person, right? And we're gonna have our first public meeting about the Yelm Highway Community Park, about the Spooners Berry property on, on Yelm Highway, September 8th, which is a Wednesday, from 4:00 PM to 6:30, and it'll be an open house on Yelm Highway, 3323 Yelm Highway, at the parking lot where they have the Berry Stand in season. The website for that is olympia-wad.gov/yalmhighwaypark. And I hope you'll engage as we're at the very beginning of planning that new park. Thanks.
Thanks for reminding folks about that. And Councilmember Partially?
Just two quick things. I attended the Joint Animal Service Commission meeting this last month, and we went over a preview for our budget, as well as some understanding about some staffing shortages that are gonna change a few hours. So if you have any use or need of the animal services, please check their website, because it has changed until they can come up to full staffing. Also, they are going to be instituting a kind of revolutionary surrender program that has been actually shown to reduce the number of surrenders by making it an appointment only. And Seattle Humane Society has begun to do that. Just once again, would encourage us to invite the new executive director to come give a preview, because we may also be coming back to the city with some potential changes with the interlocal agreement, as well as our assessment process. The last thing is just very briefly, the Thurston County Environmental Mitigation Steering Committee met. Mainly, what we went over was some of the early actions once again. Susan did a fabulous job, and went over some of the rubics that we're gonna be using to choose actions. And our next meeting is in October.
Any questions for Councilmember Partially? All right, City Manager, Steve Hall?
Two things, one clarification and one report. So Councilmember Gilman mentioned the Yelm Highway Park Planning Meeting on September 8th? 18th? Okay, we, we didn't hear it right.
I heard 18th, yeah, so 18th.
Okay, got that, thank you. The other thing is, this Thursday is our annual employee recognition barbecue, so I'd like to invite all of you to attend a chance to meet with employees and thank them for all their work. It's at the fire station, 11:30 to 1:00 PM. You're all welcome. There's a dunk tank. Councilmember Gilman is volunteer for the dunk tank. I'm not sure we're looking for more people, but if you wanna get even with Councilmember Gilman for anything, this is your opportunity, and raise money for community chess. You have to throw at the target, however, is one of the rules of the dunk tank. So anyhow, this Thursday at 11:30, I'd love to have you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, one more thing I did forget. Next week, we will not be having a business meeting. We will be having a study session in lieu of the business meeting, so there will be no public comment accepted at that. All right, without further business, before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.